Good afternoon, everyone. It is 1:30. I'd like to welcome you to the August 24th meeting of the Oklahoma City Planning Commission. A call was to order. First, before we get started, just a couple of housekeeping items. If you have a cellphone, please make sure it is silenced or off. Secondly, if you're here to speak on an item, not necessarily the applicant, but if you'd like to speak regarding an application, there are forms out in the lobby that I'd like you to fill that out. You'll be called upon during the review of the application of the item, and just please provide that to the staff below here. You'll have five minutes, up to five minutes, to speak, and just please be sure to provide your name and address for the record when you come to the podium. With that, we can move on to the first item on our agenda, is receipt of the minutes of the August 10th meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I move.
Do you want to take a roll call? Make sure we've got a call. Don't we typically do a roll call?
We don't typically do a roll call, yeah. But thank you. So, item two is receipt of the minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I move to receive the minutes from the last meeting.
Of a motion to receive the minutes of the August 10th meeting. It's been seconded by Commissioner Noble. Please cast your votes when available.
I have to vote my fellow candidates. Hi.
Next item on the agenda is continuance requests and uncontested requests.
Item 15, case SPUD 1509, defer to September 14th. Item 16, case PC 10891, defer to September 14th. Item 17, case PC 10893, defer to September 14th. Item 18, case PC 10897, defer to September 14th. Item 19, PUD 1965, defer to September 14th. Item 20, CE 1105, defer to September 14th. Item 21, case PC 10879, defer to September 28th. Item 22, case C 7527, defer to September 28th. Item 23, case C 7524, defer to September 28th. Item 24, case CE 1107, defer to September 28th. And item 25, case CE 1108, has been withdrawn.
All right. Is there anyone here to speak on any of those items? All right, I see none.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the uncontested continuance requests.
The motion to grant the uncontested continuance request is read. It's been seconded by Commissioner Meek. Please cast your votes. Those items are approved. Next is new requests.
Item 11, PUD 1382-SP01, defer to September 14th. Item 13, case PUD 1949, continue indefinitely. And item 14, case PUD 1950, defer to September 14th.
And is there anyone here to speak on those items?
In that case, I move to approve the new continuance requests.
A motion from Commissioner Goveen to approve the new requests. It's been seconded by Commissioner Noble. Please cast your votes. That item passes. Next is our consent docket.
We have two items. Item number one is case C 7577, final plat of Morgan Glen Phase II, located north of southwest 44th Street and west of South Morgan Road. Item two is case C 75, excuse me, 78, final plat of Bellflower Section 3, located south of southwest 15th Street and west of South County Line Road.
Just to check, anyone here to speak on those? Nope.
In that case, Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend approval of the consent docket.
A motion to approve the consent docket from Commissioner Goveen. It's been seconded by Commissioner Newman. Please cast your votes. And the consent docket is approved. That takes us to our items requiring separate vote. First up is item three.
This is case C 7579, preliminary plat of Liberty Villas, located west of South Air Depot Boulevard and north of southeast 89th Street, and a variance to section 5.3.1.d. .5 of the subdivision regulations.
Good afternoon. Mark Grubbs, 1800, South Sarah Road, on behalf of the applicant. This is a preliminary plat for a duplex subdivision. This entire area, you may be familiar with it, is just north of Abbott Lakes. The entire thing was zoned under a PUD industrial. Track three was R2, which is the track we are developing. Track two was R4 to the north. We agree with all the TEs. We do need a variance on TE2. As stated, there's a large industrial development to the west, so access to that parcel does not make sense. To the north is R4. The owner and developer of that does not want the access point to the north, as well as it's R4 would be fenced. It developed as an apartment complex. And the third reason is there's drainage coming through where that access would need to go. So, we do have a few reasons for requesting that variance. So, if we have any answering questions, we'd ask for your approval.
This is Commissioner Privet's ward, and he is not here. Does anybody want to lead our discussion on this?
I have a question. If you say that the, there's a problem with the access to the north, where it would need to go, why can't it go anywhere along that north property line?
It could, it could go east, as long as it meets separation offset from that drive, yeah, but where it seems to me to make logical sense to go through, instead of having to weave back and forth, there are drainage issues there. We do intend to honor the pedestrian connectivity that is stated in the PUD and requested as a TE. We are agreeing to that. We just are requesting that no vehicular access go to the north as well.
And your plan, as submitted, does show the connection to the south, so no change to that.
Shows connection to the R1 to the south, correct.
The property to the north is zoned what?
R4. It's in a PUD. That's the R4 tract. This is the master development plan of the overall PUD, and this is track two, which is all R4. Track one was commercial. Track three was R2, and track four was R1. And, I mean, even on the master development plan, I mean, it's just a master development plan, but they always showed access to the R1, but never connectivity to the north.
Are you in control of that property?
I can't hear you.
To the north. Are you in control of that property in the north? Will you be developing it?
The actual, we are not in control, but Josh Atkins is here, so he is in control of that. And he's pretty adamant about not wanting the access as well.
Well, that doesn't concern me quite as much as whether it's going to actually develop R4. I, you know, I'm not crazy by giving up the access, but if it is going to be developed R4, and not just it's zoned R4, that would, you know, assuage my concerns somewhat, certainly since there's commercial development beyond it.
And I agree with that, too. I just think that making them do a stub and then having a fence with a crash gate, sometimes we see it the other way, where the development comes later and there's a nonsensical connection. We can't see into the future, but I agree. If it's going to be R4, have a wall around it, connection is not necessary. Pedestrian access is great.
Thank you.
So, I think we're ready for a motion. We'll need to take the variance first.
I'll move to approve the variance noted in TE2, section 5.3.1.d. .5.
A motion to approve the variance of section 5.3.1.d. .5 of the subdivision-like regulations. It's been seconded by Commissioner Powers. Please cast your votes. And the variance is approved. Now for the item.
I don't think we have any other concerns or comments to address here. In fact, in that case, I'll move to approve item C 7579.
A motion to recommend approval to City Council, item C 7579, excuse me, this is preliminary plat, to approve item C 7579. It's been seconded by Commissioner Meek. Please cast your votes. And that item passes. Good luck with your project. Next is item four.
Item four is case ED 237, application to dedicate a street to the public located south of East I-240 Highway and east of southeastern Avenue, and a variance to section 5.1.8.a. of the subdivision regulations.
Good afternoon. Mark Zitzel with Johnson &amp; Associates. On behalf of the applicant, two items on your agenda today are in regard to street dedications for a large industrial project in this part of town. The first one, we are requesting a variance on for the street name. Typically, an east-west street would be a numbered street. In conversations with staff, the way that the street is designed, it was determined that it's more likely that a named street would be less confusing for emergency services than a numbered street, given on the north end and the south end, they're at two different blocks. And so, having two different street names on this one section certainly didn't make sense. So, that's the reason for the request for the variance. We would ask for your approval of both, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Again, this is Commissioner Privet's ward, and he is not here. Do any commissioners have any questions or comments? None?
I don't.
Is there anyone here to speak on the item? Okay, see none. I think we're ready for a motion.
Have we come up with a name?
So, we submitted it with a number. I believe it was 85th Street, and that's when the conversation came around that we need to come up with a name. So, it'll be named prior to City Council.
Zitzel Parkway.
Zitzel Parkway is what the audience would like. I'm not opposed to that, but...
I'll leave it to staff to make sure that it's not something that would be equally confusing.
Fox Boulevard.
Like Eastern or Bryant, you know, something.
I have one question. Are we recommending, or are we an approving body on ED cases?
We're recommending.
Recommending. Mr. Chairman, I will move to recommend approval of item ED 237.
A motion to recommend approval to City Council of ED 237.
Sorry, I'm confused because it says approval of the application, but the City Council is accepting the dedication, so is, what is the action? I guess I'm confused as well.
I might have gotten out of order. We need to approve the variance first.
Yeah, that's true.
So, do you want to pull that motion?
Yeah, so let me retract the previous motion, and I will state a new motion to approve the variance in TE3, 5.1.8.a.
A motion to approve variance, section 5.1.8.a. of the subdivision regulations. Has it been seconded by Commissioner Noble? Or is this our previous? Try that again.
Hey, there we go.
There we go. All right, now the variance has been, it's been motioned by Commissioner Goveen. Waiting for a second.
No second box popping up.
I'm blaming Commissioner Meek for this. All right. Still, what's that? It's not showing who is seconded by. So, do I have a voice second?
Second.
Do we need to do a voice vote? Should I keep? Okay. So, all right, let the record show, it's been motioned by Commissioner Goveen, seconded by Commissioner Noble. We do have the voting, if it will let us. And the variance is approved. Now, are we straight on?
We're straight. I spoke too soon, so the City Council accepts dedications, but the Planning Commission actually approves.
Okay.
So, I move approval of ED 237.
A motion to approve item ED 237. It's been seconded by Commissioner Newman. Please cast your votes. And that item passes. I do like the sound of Zitzel Parkway.
Thank you. I'll pass it along.
All right. Item five.
Item five is case ED 238, application to dedicate a new portion of the east I-240 Service Road to the public, located south of east I-240 Highway and east of southeastern Avenue.
This is the companion item to the case you just heard. Eventually, another dedication will come through with Liberty Parkway that will connect these two streets that you will hopefully approve today. This one does not have as fancy as a name as Zitzel Parkway. It will be the I-240 Service Road, but we would ask for your approval on this one as well. There are three TEs, and we agree with those.
Anybody have any comments on this one? There is no variance, so...
Nope. I would like to suggest we consider the street name be proposed. So, we have proposed street to the south and proposed road to the north. I think that would be, keep it simple. No, joking. I move approval of item ED 238.
A motion to approve item ED 2308 from Commissioner Goveen, seconded by Commissioner Powers. Please cast your votes.
In the interest of less confusion, you know.
We appreciate it.
And that item passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item six.
This is SP 576, application for a special permit to operate use unit 8300.33 Drinking Establishment, sit-down alcohol permitted, in the DTD-1 district, located at 808 Northwest Sixth Street.
Hi, Holly Hunt with Sam Gresham Architects. This application came through last month and was approved by the commission with some conditions stated for further soundproofing, which we were all in agreement with, and then the city let me know that there was a clerical error with the property owner's list. I provided a 600, but only a 300 was used, so we're just back to make sure that there were no public protests, and so hope we can move on, move forward with our approval and get started.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Goveen, this is your ward?
Yes, there's no changes to the application. I don't, is anyone signed up to speak?
I do not have anyone signed up to speak.
Okay. I have not been contacted by anyone with any concerns, and the TE has been noted with the four-inch insulation provided at the roof, as well as soundproofing curtains on the north facade to mitigate sound transmission, which you're in agreement with. And in that case, I move to recommend approval of SP 576.
A motion to recommend approval of SP 576. It's been seconded by Commissioner Powers. Please cast your votes. Item passes. Good luck with the project.
Good time, thank you.
Item seven.
This is PUD 1781-SP01, application for a specific plan pursuant to the approval of PUD 1781, located at 1315 West Wilshire Boulevard.
Mr. Chairman, Members of Commissioner Brian Coon, 2832 West Wilshire, representative applicant, and I've got Sherri Weaver with me today, who's the executive director of Wings. If you happen to have any questions for her, this is just part of the PUD process of turning it into a site plan, and we've done that. And according to staff, we've met, everything on our plan meets the requirements of the PUD. So, I just ask for your approval, and I'll answer any questions if you have any.
All right, thank you. This is Commissioner Pennington's ward, and he's not here. Do any other commissioners have any questions or comments regarding the application?
I will just say that this is a, this is a process that's been, you know, a long time in development, and I'm happy to see that it's reached this stage.
We're excited to move forward.
Is there anyone signed up to speak?
I do not have anyone signed up to speak on this item, so I think we're ready for a motion.
Well, unless anybody else has any questions or comments, I'll move approval of the specific Plan One on PUD 1781, item number seven.
A motion to approve PUD 1781, Specific Plan One, from Commissioner Powers. It's been seconded by Commissioner Goveen. Please cast your votes. That item passes. Good luck.
Come see us more often, Brian.
You what?
Come see us more often.
Item eight.
Item eight is SPUD 1554, application to rezone 1116 Northwest 49th Street from PUD 1603.
Good afternoon. David Box, 522 Call Core Drive, on behalf of the applicant, who is also here with us. We are seeking to rezone what was formerly a single-family home to allow the office use that has existed for quite some time to remain. We came in and rezoned this in 2016 under the PUD 1603. At the time, there was quite a bit of protest, lots of neighborhood meetings, but Powers would have been a part of that, and in that old PUD, we put a limitation on the continued operation of this structure as an office for either of two events, whatever happened first, the operation of the dry cleaners that fronts Western going away, or three years. Three years came and went. Everyone kind of forgot about that limitation. It was brought back up, and so what we're seeking to do now is to rezone that house to allow the office use to continue as long as the dry cleaning operation is in existence. And since that time, my client has had significant outreach with the neighbors, what was a very protested case now, before we even filed it, reached out to the neighbors, and no protest, no concern was raised whatsoever. So, we're here today just to memorialize that office use, again, until such time that the dry cleaning use that fronts Western ceases, and in that event, it reverts back to R1.
Commissioner Powers, your ward?
There is a TE, and we agree to it.
Well, I can't, I can't agree with the characterization that the time limit was forgotten about, because every time I drive by it, I think about it, but...
I forgot about.
But it's true that the process of negotiation on the PUD was very active, I'll say. It was vociferous. And I will say a couple of things about this. I think that this case is kind of an indication of two sides of the same coin. On the one hand, really all we're doing here, I am assured, is lifting that three-year limitation. And so, that seems to me like there ought to be some process other than full-blown rezoning, that we would have some method to address that. I'm not sure it would take, I'm not sure I want it to be entirely administrative, but at the same time, it seems to me like something as simple as that ought to lend itself to some other form of change than a full-blown rezoning request. And I realize that that's on us and council to do something about, on the one hand. On the other hand, I will say that I think when that happens, we need to look very closely, whether it's through a full-blown rezoning request like this, or whether it is through some abbreviated process. You know, when you negotiate something on a larger tract of land that includes a lot of moving pieces and parts, they sort of fit together in a way that makes sense to the people at the time that are working on the negotiation. To pull one of them out later and look at it individually is something that I think requires an extra amount of scrutiny. There was a neighborhood meeting, apparently, in this case. I was not aware of that and did not attend, and so I have nobody's word about how it went, other than Mr. Box's, which I'm willing to take, in this particular instance, because of how active the negotiation was the first time around. There are people in the neighborhood, this is just across the street, across Western from where I live, and so I'm pretty sure I would have been getting those phone calls if there were people worked up. I have not received any phone calls, or letters, or emails, or texts, or any of that stuff. So, on this very, very simple request, the other thing I'll say, because it was so vociferously negotiated first time around, is that the applicant has been very conscientious about adhering to the rules that were laid down in that original PUD. And so, I think I'm willing to let go of the three years. I think it was really kind of a kick-the-can-down-the-road thing at the time. The applicant wasn't entirely sure that the dry cleaner would still be in this location by now, and the fact that it is, and it's kind of an anchor to the commercial area at 50th and Western, I think, you know, speaks well of him and of the use of this property for this purpose, so... Nobody else have anything you want to say, or comments, or questions? If there's nobody that wants to be heard?
I don't have anyone signed up to speak.
I'll move approval, SPUD 1554.
A motion from Commissioner Powers to recommend approval to City Council of SPUD 1554. It's been seconded by Commissioner Meek. Please cast your votes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item nine.
Item nine is SPUD 1550, application to rezone 1105 Southeast 51st Street from R1.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Name is Gunnar Joyce with Rigor Law Group, 136 Thompson Drive, here on behalf of the applicant, Tyson Heltson. You guys may remember, two weeks ago, we were here on this one, and we had discussion about the Western fence, and so we asked for a postponement, so we can do a look at that in greater detail. And we also made the two other changes that were requested two weeks ago, that being removal of three uses that Commissioner Privet brought up on the floor. We've taken those three out. And then the other one was a discussion about lighting. We've added in language that it is required of full cutoff lighting, and it... it is required of full cutoff lighting, and it can not be directed to the residents to the west. And then the last edit is that fence, we went and taken pictures. Those are added as Exhibit C to the spud. Just for your information, it is eight feet until about the front porch of the house, then it steps down gradually to six feet. The reasoning for that, it was done in collaboration with that homeowner, and they, they didn't want to have kind of the eight-foot all the way up to their property line, kind of feel like you're next to a compound. So it steps down to six for a little more of a residential feel up there on the street front. That neighbor's been involved with that fence design, and we have no protest with this request. So happy to take any questions.
I have a question. I, I'm hoping that the photos that you sent, and this is one of those, that the light that I'm seeing there was for the benefit of the photograph.
Yes, absolutely.
It looks like a lot of light being blasted at that house, but.
Yeah, that was just to make it visible. I apologize. It didn't get there during the daytime, but that, that is the light you're seeing.
Okay.
Probably.
I mean, it's, it seems like we were debating whether six feet or eight feet was appropriate and discussing whether if it was seven, is it close enough? But this, to me, anyway, this feels eight. Stepping down to six is perfectly appropriate.
If the neighbor's happy, you know, that's really who we're trying to protect, so.
Sounds like you best everything that was concerned from the previous.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
There's nobody signed up to speak. Nobody else has any comments or questions. I'll move approval, SPOD 1550.
A motion from Commissioner Powers to recommend approval to City Council of SPOD 1550. It's been seconded by Commissioner Meek. Please cast your votes. That item passes.
Thanks, Commissioners.
Brings us to item 10.
Item 10 is SPOD 1555, application to rezone 2801 South Sarah Road from AA.
Good afternoon, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive, here on behalf of the applicant, which is On-Q. We have two representatives from On-Q with us, as well as Mohammed Khan with SMC Engineering. This is one of those tracks over in West Oklahoma City made possible by the Turnpike there at 29th and Sarah. The Turnpike has a full interchange. It's actually spanned on two different streets, but we have a full interchange there. So commercial development and On-Q development seems to be a perfect fit for that location. There are no protests that we're aware of. There, there's one TE that we agree to. And then I need to discuss, it's not a TE, but it's a comment that we'd like to have struck. It says, should this application be approved, an additional 25-foot of site triangle right-of-way should be requested. And then it goes along to say, along with 17-foot of additional easement. So that's a stated request, of course. When the city doesn't have the full 100-foot of right-of-way, the city is already in possession of more than 100-foot of right-of-way based upon the acquisition of the OTA. And so the city has all the right-of-way needed. So we would ask for that to be struck, because there's nothing more to give. And I did speak to Barry Lodge. Mohammed also spoke to Barry Lodge, and I believe he confirmed that that's the case.
Commissioner Meek, this is your ward. Would you like to lead our discussion?
I agree with David. We've talked with staff, and I believe that the additional right-of-way is not needed. And I think it's a good fit. We've met over it, and I don't see any problem with it. Any other commissioners have any comments?
I, I have a comment.
Jeff.
In connection with something not in On-Q, Mr. Box had commented to me about their light penetration or lack thereof, their light containment on source. And in connection with that case, I made kind of a broad sweep of the On-Qs in Oklahoma City. And I have to say, it's kind of remarkable how well they contain their light on source, on, on site. This, this would normally give me some pause for a commercial use this close to residential, but I think they do a really good job of it, I have to say.
I agree. Right. It does help.
From spilling out.
Clearly it does, yes.
Yeah. If there's no other questions, I move to approve SPOD 1555 with the TE. And we've determined the additional right-of-way is not needed. Like to request to have the additional right-of-way request struck.
So a motion from Commissioner Meek to recommend approval to City Council of SPOD 1555, subject to the technical evaluations, and striking the request for additional right-of-way. It's been seconded by Commissioner Govine. Please cast your votes.
Thank you.
Passed. Good luck. Item 11 has been deferred. That brings us to the last item on the agenda, item 12.
Item 12 is case SP 579, application for a special permit to operate use unit 8300.1 Automotive and Equipment Automotive Dealerships and Malls in the C3 District located at 1215 West Britton Road.
Good afternoon. My name is Craig Aaron. Dean Lim is an associate. And I need to be clear that that's a real estate firm. I'm not an attorney, so please forgive any of my ignorance. I'm speaking on behalf of Liam Tong and Tim Tong, requesting a special permit to allow the use of the property for an automobile dealership auto mall. It's already currently Zone C3, but we need a special permit, which we feel we're already in the, it's already conducive with the requirements for that permit to be issued. But we're open to suggestion, there are any, hopefully for approval.
This is Commissioner Pennington's ward. Do any other commissioners have any questions or comments regarding the item?
I have to say, this used to be my warden, and there are a couple of other car dealerships down Britton Road, but I think they were all done by SPOD and for a reason. This is, this is an area, you know, the Britton area is part of a revitalization effort. The few automobile dealership type uses that exist along there are not contributing in a favorable way to that. And I, I would really like to see this put into an SPOD, and I, I certainly wouldn't vote to approve it without Mr. Pennington here to say he was in support of it. I, I think it ought to be in an SPOD.
We have others that feel similarly?
I was going to ask about the, the TE, about one driveway shall be closed and curved, but the site plan exhibit clearly shows the two driveways, and that's a pretty big discrepancy on how the site would be used. But I also agree with Commissioner Powers' sentiments on.
Would you be open to considering a continuance to allow for a couple of, for additional discussions on creating a SPOD on this, as well as confirmation on the number of drives?
Yeah. May I ask on the, the concern for the, for going with the spud would be the revitalization of the district. I would like to point out that this property seems very conducive, as we already have 30 striped parking spaces. We have 12 striped spaces on the east side, 12 striped spaces on the west, as well as six customer spaces in front, two of which are ADA compliant. One of the ingress egresses is currently blocked off. It's kind of a, in an obsolete way with parking blocks. But obviously, you know, if we want one ingress egress, we can accommodate that very easily, I believe.
Those kind of, those kind of improvements are something that could be memorialized and required so that in the event the property is ever sold and someone else wants to make use of it, they'll have to abide by those kinds of restrictions. So, and maybe there should be hours of operation. I mean, there might, there might be a range of things that would be discussed as part of the process. I'm just saying for me, I think it would take that kind of control in order to get my vote.
I, well, I mean, would you, I guess you say, you know, you can close the driveway, no problem. I guess then furthermore to the site plan exhibit, you're showing some parking, but you're saying you've got all the parking on the east and west. Why isn't that on the site plan if that's?
Unfortunately, the site plan didn't reflect the parking. I have photos. I know it was.
You said there's six on the front, including handicap?
Yes, sir. There's three that are actually directly in front of the building. There's one ADA and two non-ADAs. And there are three directly behind the front sign with the landscaping that's clustered, one of which is ADA and two non-ADAs. And then on the east side, and I can submit, I know it's, I'm sorry, but I have photos that I can actually show you all if you would like.
Okay.
I mean, I guess where I was headed with that, too, happy to look at the photos, but that, this would give you a chance to kind of correct a few of those things so that the exhibit, you know, if you came back to, with the spud, all of that could just be shown as, as it is.
Okay.
Which would, would help the case.
Yeah, I agree. I think we need to, this site plan clearly doesn't reflect what you're talking about. And then even the, the handicap spot shown on this plan or the ADA plan, a parking spot does not conform to the requirements of an ADA space. So I think it would be important for us to clarify those items so that we understand not only where your parking cars circulate, how you get around such a small site with that many spaces.
Yeah, maybe.
So the suggestion is to switch to a spud? Is that, is that the suggestion?
Yes.
Okay.
And we would take, give you a continuance today. How long, Sarah, to make that happen?
I think at the minimum, it would be the first meeting in October.
Let's go for that and keep our fingers crossed.
Can I just real quick ask, so what is it that a spud, that the commission would like that we cannot do with, with this application? We can continue this application. Is there something that you're looking, they can provide a site plan, we can condition, we can do those things with the current application? So I'm just wondering what, what else you would like that would need a spud?
I don't want to interrupt, Commissioner, but there are six dealerships within 1.7 miles of the subject property. And four of those six are currently Zone C3. Only one is C4 and one is I-2. And the one that's I-2 is adjacent to the railroad tracks on Britton and, and Western. So we, I thought just there was conforming properties well within a mile of this property that were already operating in C3 as dealerships. That's, that's truly why, I'm not an attorney, but I felt like that's why the special permit would be the way to go, since we have existing operation already.
Well, I mean, if you want to take a continuance to our next meeting, let Commissioner Pennington weigh in on what the conditions might be. Each of us give some thought to what we would like to see. I would, would definitely want to see conditions on the lighting and, and maybe hours of operation. And I, I would have to see the layout.
Or a site plan.
You know, how it's actually going to work.
Yeah, if it's, if it's an auto dealership that's going to have 30 cars on site with room for circulation, that, that makes a difference over the type of dealership where the whole, every paved surface is just covered with cars and you have to jock them in and out. Those start to veer more towards salvage-ish looking, you know, whereas, so I think the, the number of cars you're putting on the site is, makes a difference.
Certainly.
Certainly.
And how, how they're laid out. So it'd be, I would just like, I'd just like to see that in the site.
Okay. Yeah, I just, it seems that we can accomplish it with, with this application. And just as long as we get all the input.
Updated.
From you all, then we can put it together, the applicant.
I have one question on the landscape buffer.
Yes.
Between C3 and R1, is it just five feet?
It's a six-foot privacy fence directly to the north.
And right now, it says it has a chain link fence?
No, sir. On the chain link, that's going to be on the south side of the property, which is facing across from other C3. The only R1 is directly north, and there's a six-foot stockade fence separating, plus an alleyway easement.
And what was the, the distance for the landscape buffer?
There's a TE that they're requesting a landscape buffer.
Sarah Welch, Planning Department, normally for between C3.
Yeah.
Normally between C3 and R1, it's a 15-foot setback with a five-foot landscape buffer. Now, that's all paved back there. So just noting that that is concrete behind the building and into the alley.
So no cars can be parked along the back in that 15 feet, plus a five-foot buffer?
I don't believe they have room for that.
No, no. There's a 20-foot buffer altogether. And there, there's no parking that would be your, your turnaround drive-through to, to navigate the parking lot.
I think, yeah, for me, the removal of the chain link fence would be an issue as well.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's, it's kind of us to try to go ahead and say any issues that we think we have with this, so that you can take that onboard before you come back, and we don't just bring up a bunch of new stuff. So we've identified landscape buffer, which you've got a 20-foot alley and utility easement, of which your fence is on, in the middle of. So you've got that 10-foot of alley. And I think the question Commissioner Noble's asking is then, how does the landscape buffer affect that? Because you would actually have to take out paving to have that landscape buffer in the back five feet, I believe I'm saying. So, but it's, is that outside of the alley easement? You know what I mean? Because we can't plant trees over the, the easement anyway, so.
Typically, it'd be within the property line.
Yeah, that's, that's, so there's the 10 feet, then you have a five-foot buffer. So you're 15 feet into your property. So that, that just affects your circulation and a number of things, as well as you might rearrange your parking striping if you have to close one of those.
That would move, that would move to where you were only paved, according to this drawing, 12 foot, one inch of paving.
Yes. That's correct.
So that's clear. And then Commissioner Powers, you mentioned the chain link fence is.
Across the front of the property, yes. I think that's a problem.
It's not good. And we'd want to see, you know, lighting, you know, full cutoff fixtures where, in proximity to residential. Anything else?
So are we saying two weeks, September 14th, is sufficient to continue this, too?
Well, we can see. You want to take two weeks and see if you can get that back to us?
Yeah, I think at minimum, yes.
I think hours of operation. Are those, are those like governed by state law or something on car dealerships? I don't know. I think we would want to see hours of operation as well, so.
I'm sorry. I didn't hear what you said.
I think we would want to see hours of operation as well.
Okay, very well.
Okay, so I think we're ready for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move to continue SP 579 to the next planning commission meeting, September 14th.
A motion to continue the item to the September 14th meeting. It's been seconded by Commissioner Meek. Please cast your votes. That item passes. We'll see you again in two weeks.
Thank you.
That was the last item to be heard on the agenda. Are there any additional items? Communications and report, planning commission committees. There were none. Planning commission members.
No. I congratulate you on a short meeting.
Oh, thank you. You know, Mr. Box is no longer here, but he guessed 215. And I was going to award him a pair of socks if he got that right. But I guess I'll have to find him someplace else.
Yep.
Yeah, must be present to it.
Maybe a new pair of moccasins.
Any other commission members? Planning department?
Nothing from us.
Municipal councillor's office? Any citizens to be heard? All right. I'll call us adjourned then. Thank you.